Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the North Penn School District's Board of School Directors, October 6, 2015. Tonight is our regularly scheduled work session. The meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and attending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of this Pennsylvania Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the audience's citizen's logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker, and this is in reference to Board Policy 8340. Again, welcome. Let's start this meeting off with a Pledge of Allegiance led by Mrs. Charnock.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Mrs. Charnock. So we're going to start with our work session agenda tonight. The first issue is going to be the Education Community Policy Committee forwarding ours a survey. And Dr. Deitch, you want to start with us?
Thank you, Mr. President. We do have a PowerPoint, so I would call your attention to the monitors regarding that. We do intend to, even, provide an overview of the curriculum, the programs that we presently have in place to address drugs, alcohol, tobacco, and at-risk behaviors. And this ties into the Pennsylvania Youth Survey, and that is a survey that is done once every two years in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to participating school districts. Presently, North Penn is not a participating school district in the PACE or Pennsylvania Youth Survey. For those that do participate, it's offered in grades six, eight, ten, and twelve. And it's done in odd-numbered years. Just a little more information on what the Pennsylvania Youth Survey is. It does collect information on our youth regarding their knowledge, their attitudes, behaviors towards alcohol, tobacco, and other drug use, and it does collect data on other problem behaviors. The questions that are a part of that PACE survey fall into four domains: community, school, family, and peer or individual. The Pennsylvania Youth Survey results, at our ECP meeting, we did have Eileen Rafferty from the county share some data with us, and that data is at your seats. There's data regarding various gateway drugs, thirty-day use, alcohol, cigarettes, smokeless tobacco, marijuana, inhalants. You see data in there on sources of those. You see data on the access and willingness to use, the various things we just talked about. You see some other data on other antisocial behavior. You see data on violence and drugs on school property in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and in Montgomery County. And you see data on symptoms of depression, questions that are asked in this survey regarding thoughts, and also on suicide risk. So those are some of the items that the PACE survey gathers data on, and we did have that data presented to us by Ms. Rafferty. So the question is, what is North Penn presently doing to address these topics? And that's the intention of tonight's presentation, just to give you an overview. And then finally, where do we go to from here? Regarding what we're doing in North Penn to address these topics, we do have a health curriculum. We do have an Act 211 Committee on Safe and Drug-Free Schools. We have our school districts' guidance program. We have a student assistance program, and counselors provided through that program. And we have mainstay counselors to help students in special education with emotional concerns. So let's walk through those. The first would be the North Penn Health Curriculum. And in the North Penn Health Curriculum, we have Concepts of Health, Healthful Living, Safe and Injury Prevention, Safety and Injury Prevention, also, of course, Physical Activity and Principles, Concepts, Strategies for Movement. Those in red being some of the things that are addressed through the survey, such as the PACE survey. We do have Pennsylvania Standards for Health Curriculum, and the North Penn School District Health Curriculum does meet the standards. We also, as a part of our health curriculum, do provide information and strategies to help students with making positive choices. And of course, all of our lessons are age-appropriate. A little more specificity on what's in the health program. You can see alcohol, tobacco, and chemical substances are covered as a part of the health curriculum. And at the elementary level, it's facilitated through our Health Waves Program. It's age-appropriate. We have some handouts that are used with the "do-do" definitions and harmful effects, and "say no" approaches covered at the elementary level. At the secondary level, it is facilitated through the Glencoe Health, that's the publisher, Glencoe Health textbook, and a magazine called Choices. And we do focus on decision-making strategies and peer pressure, effects of substances, Pennsylvania Zero Tolerance Law, that's all covered as a part of the health curriculum. Healthful Living is another part of the health curriculum, and you can see there in red, Decision-Making Skills and Health in the Environment are addressed. And at the elementary level, students are taught strategies to avoid and to de-escalate harmful situations. Students do discuss what are good feelings and bad feelings in reference to mental health. At the secondary level, students do take an in-depth look into media influence, as well as environmental influences when making choices. The students do learn about warning signs of mental health and depression, and how to help individuals reach out to professionals. In the Safety and Injury Prevention portion of the health curriculum, there's a discussion of safe and unsafe practices. We do go through the Human Growth and Development Unit. We have age-appropriate discussions about HIV and AIDS. At the secondary level, we also discuss HIV and AIDS. We have abstinence-based best-practice program. That being absence is what is advocated. Risk factors of poor choices, STDs, STIs, and we talk about positive relationships in the health curriculum. And as I said earlier, we have the Glencoe Health textbook, an online textbook. We have the Health Waves Program used. And if we transition to the Act 211 Committee, and that's the Safe and Drug-Free Schools Act, there is a committee, and you can see key committee members there. We have the high school principal. We have a couple assistant principals from the high school. We have some board members on that committee. We have our Safe Schools Coordinator. We have a district judge and folks from the Montgomery County Health Department. We also have members from each local police municipality. They meet basically once a month. And they work on various things, including a discussion and analysis of district-wide safety concerns and work. They work on the high school safety issues, the campaign against destructive decisions that happens in April. We also have a DUI reenactment, and then a follow-up event with that DUI reenactment. And then if you take a look at our counseling program, we do have a guidance curriculum, and that is a multi-dimensional curriculum. We have some things covered in there: bullying prevention, kindness, diversity, personal safety, and internet safety. Friendship and emotions, career study are all part of the guidance curriculum. And in terms of our guidance staff, and we do have one guidance counselor per elementary school, we have three or four, depending on the size of the middle school, counselors per middle school. We have ten full-time guidance counselors and a half-time guidance person at the high school, and we have a guidance counselor at North Bridge. We also have the Student Assistance Program to provide additional supports, and that is focused on individual and group services. They deal with mental health concerns, drug and alcohol abuse, awareness and prevention. That program does have a counseling component to it for those who need it. There is a Student Assistance Program counselor four days a week at the North Penn High School. We have one at the Pendale Middle School, three days a week. We have guidance counselor, excuse me, an SAP counselor at Pembroke and Penfield, three days a week, and split between the two buildings. We also have an SAP counselor one day a week at North Bridge. That is funded through our North Penn School District Student Services budget. Their focus is psychoeducational. They don't get into therapy. It's not a therapeutic model, but they want to help students to be successful in their educational program, so they'll address it from that aspect. We also have what we call the mainstay counselors. They do support students with mental health needs that are in our emotional support program in our special education program. Those sessions may be group sessions, or they can be individual. And their focus is also, oh, their focus is therapeutic. And that, we have for seven days of service at the high school. They do help students that are in the emotional support program. Some are behavioral issues, other are emotional issues. We do have three days at Pendale, and we have two at Pembroke and one at Penfield. In terms of the budget for the contracted, those programs, Student Assistance Program and the mainstay through Lakeside, those are outside contracts that we have with those agencies. Northwestern Human Services for the Student Assistance Program at $116,892, and then Lakeside for the mainstay program at $185,103. In terms of next steps, what I believe we need to do is, I think, we need to meet as a team with the Montgomery County Representatives. I'm pleased to report that Eileen Rafferty has agreed to join us and have some North Penn folks meet with Eileen to talk about what North Penn School District is presently doing and see how that might compare to other school districts. And then also, very importantly, to determine if there is any additional data which is needed for us to make decisions about the content of our curriculum and our programs. So that'll occur in the next couple months as we review what we're doing. So that's an overview of what we're doing now, and ties into the discussion that we had at the ECP Committee. Are there any questions?
Did the ECP Committee send this forward because they want us to do it?
The ECP Committee and Mrs. Charnock's chair had a lot of discussion about it. Can you summarize?
Essentially, we wanted to evaluate our programs currently and see how, if there are any gaps, and, you know, what we would need to do to fill those gaps if necessary. But our first pass is to see what we have in-house.
So is that the next step? That's why you want to meet with the county to compare what they do and what we have, and see if we're doing more than what the county has, or more than what the county does?
Or if there are other places that are doing some things that perhaps we had not considered at North Penn. We believe we're addressing the problem appropriately. We have quite a bit of resources that we're putting towards this, but we're very willing to meet with others who might be able to suggest what other kinds of things are being in other places for us to consider.
Let's go around the table. Anybody want to voice some comments?
I actually had a lot of questions. My first concern was, I've been hammered by a lot of people that, you know, how come we didn't vote to say yes for everybody, the kids that take the survey? I got frustrated because the people that were hammering me had never read the survey. That's frustration. It's simply, hey, the other people said it so. They want to tell us, even though they haven't looked at it, they want us to take, the kids to take the survey. They don't know why. The more I researched into this, I found out that I think Kurt had a lot more to show than he showed me yesterday, which probably three times as much as what we just saw up on here. So maybe this was a quick summary for the programs that we already offer our kids. To me, the county says, take the survey, here's the results. We've already seen a summary, which everybody back there can see, that for the schools, I don't know how many schools responded in Montgomery County, but our kids are no different than the rest of the kids in the state of Pennsylvania. We all have the same issues. But all the county wants to do is say, take the survey, and then we'll let you apply, for our taxpayers, for our tax dollars, to let you apply for between forty and fifty thousand dollars. To me, that is immaterial. And I'm going to say that, that's immaterial. To me, it's, what has North Penn been doing? Now, I just heard, you just said, did the lady talk about our programs that we have? Okay. It's my understanding that just take the survey, end of story, and they go away. When, at no time did I ever hear that they said, let us see your programs, and we'll let you know if we think you can do a better job. Once I saw everything they were doing, to me, not only has North Penn taken the second step, but we're at the high end of the second step. So it's not a question of taking a survey. And also, I have to say, and I've had some discussion with some people on this, that as you saw on part of the program, that the survey says there's some things that the school district can do in teaching, and you saw the programs. And we also have, I think, Kurt, you said, we have Northwestern Human Resources?
We do. That's the Student Assistance Program contract I referenced.
Okay. Yeah, by the way, last year, we paid them $174,000. I got the numbers right here. That says 116. I got 174.
Do we use them?
Not that it really matters. Not that it really matters, but I got all the W2 information.
Yeah, we use them for other things besides the Student Assistance Program.
Okay. Anyway, and we have about a dozen other outside sources that we use for not only special education, but also for our other students. But to me, we're at the top level of this next step. Nobody seemed, before tonight, nobody really seemed to be addressing that. So I think we're doing a stand-up job of doing this. And I think, did you just say, I thought I saw here, there's going to be a team? I don't know who's going to be represented, that probably people, I guess like Diane, people involved in the curriculum, I guess. And I don't know if you would want somebody from the board. I'd like to go, but I don't know if I can contribute. But I'm just frustrated that, it seems to me that the county's saying, take the survey, and they walk away. I've never once heard say, what are you doing? You know, or here's what other school districts who've responded to the survey, here's what they're doing, and here's what North Penn should be doing. I think if they're going to really get involved in this, that they should take the next step too, and help us. Okay, North Penn, you're doing, you're doing a great job. Let's, and tell us that we're doing a great job. I'd like to see that being done. And I think that that may be forthcoming, as you said, with this next meeting.
Yeah, she agreed to come and work with us. When we were at the last committee meeting, Mr. O'Donnell, she did agree she would come and be a part of that review.
And I guess one final thing is, you did mention up here, but when I first heard about this, the county never at one time, to my knowledge, mentioned that we have our Act 211 Committee, which is mandated by the state that every school district has an Act 211 Committee. Until you mentioned it here, I'd never heard this once from this lady, from the county. So I just wonder what's going on. Anyway, I know we're doing a stand-up job. I feel good about that. Thank you.
I'll wait till the girls.
The ladies?
The ladies. I'm sorry, the ladies. The ladies.
You know, this is, I think everyone has, obviously, different feeling, different background about this. I guess my entire life, I've been on student council, been group efforts, doing things together. And originally, I felt like that I really wanted to be part of this with the county. Whether we needed it or not, I guess, I still feel that this is something that's not measurable. I think we can't say we're doing a stand-up job. We are, I don't, I think it's something that's really not finite, and I think that this is something that we all need to learn about and know about, and I just don't think it can hurt us to take the survey. I mean, they're going to, you know, put resources into our district, and now you think that we don't need them. But I just don't think you can have too many, and it's just my personal opinion.
Just a quick response. One more thing that I forgot to mention is our PSSA scores. Our scores are slowly going down. It's my understanding, there's sixth, eighth, tenth, and twelfth grade will be taking this, it'll take up an entire period, forty-three minutes, taken away from our reading, math, writing, that our scores are going, it's just one more little thing, just a little thing, taking away from teachers' time for the students. It's not one thing, it's just, this is one of many things that is slowly taking away. And we need to start turning our PSSA scores around. So that...
I feel like this wouldn't have to be taken away, but we could, it could be put in the health curriculum as part of a class, the survey. It's every other year, forty-five minutes, you know, and no one wants higher test scores than I do, Frank, believe me. And I know how important not missing classes, but I just feel like that this is something that could be worked out. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're arguing a little bit before we have all of the data and the facts. I think we, as a school district, are known for collecting our data and getting information. I think we all know that drugs and alcohol is a problem, whether we want to admit it or not, or whether we're doing a good job or not. And this would just identify for our district, and it's anonymous, so it's no child's name is on it, but would identify our district, where the problems are, and then, again, we can address what the programs are. So I don't see the harm in taking the survey, and I know the issue's going to come up, that the questions are offensive, but I think that the data that it would reveal might be something that would be useful to us, and that's why I'm for it. And if our programs are good, then we'll know that they're good because our, this data will show that we fall in line with everybody else. But until we have that data, I don't know how you could make a statement that we're doing everything great. Thank you.
Anybody else want to add anything?
First of all, I think, I mean, in due respect to the ladies, I think the, after going through the survey, I think it's very intrusive. I, you know, that's the first thing, okay? The second thing is, when you give surveys like this out to people, you're not necessarily getting a, how can I say, an honest response. A lot of these young people don't take them seriously. They don't. I mean, you know, try to put yourself, I mean, maybe, you know, I look back to years ago, when I was in school, many, many years ago, and, you know, I try to think, and also looking at a lot of young people. Surely, there are a lot of young people who take things seriously, but a lot of young people don't fill this out, and I don't know if they'll be totally, how can I say, objective in regarding to their responses. So that's the second thing. The third thing, I really believe that, you know, we can do this without taking a survey like this. That's my opinion. I think that we are striving to both, you know, with the committee level and to work with parents, and, you know, I don't really, I don't know. I just, again, I just don't like some of the questions on air on the survey. I just don't think it's going, we're going to get a really positive and fruitful or honest response. And I just don't see it going anywhere. That's my, that's my opinion. It's my two cents.
Mr. Charnock.
I just want to make sure that after that information, or the committee meets, that we get feedback from that committee, a work session again to see what the results are. Thank you.
Have we shown the survey to any parents, and just a few parents, or had they look at it and see what they've said? I'm just curious.
We don't have a system to, we have not done that.
Do you think that that would benefit us? Let parents read some of the survey before they take it? Because I'll be honest with you, as a parent, I wouldn't let my kid take the survey.
Is this confidential, the survey?
It's anonymous. It's supposed to be anonymous.
I mean, why can't we just put it and give it out with the agendas and say, this is what we're looking at, folks, and let people look at it? I mean, can't, are we permitted to do that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, if somebody wants one, give it to them.
My initial understanding when this was first presented to us was, we are missing out on revenue opportunity because we don't participate in this. And then, no, no, it started, in fact, it was more of, we're somehow impacting the county, and it's not getting its full share of revenue because we don't participate. That's how it was first presented. That's not true. Correct?
The most recent explanation I got from Eileen Rafferty was that it wouldn't make a difference to how much the county gets. They're going to get what they get, whether we do the survey or not. It wouldn't make a difference whether or not the county would be able to give us any money from the money they have. Estimated somewhere around forty to fifty thousand that would be available if we agreed to do the survey.
Okay. So initially, a change from, ooh, if you folks don't do this, you're hurting others. No, that's not the case. But if we do do this, we may take forty thousand dollars from the coffers that somebody else maybe needs more than we do.
Right.
Right? I mean, that's possible. I also agree with Mr. Schilling. You know, parents, you really ought to look at the survey. I mean, I can't, you know, some stuff, people will be honest on, some of these things, they're just not going to be honest. And so, I don't, I would question the efficacy of the survey itself and the results that it provides, you know? I know, within statistical, you know, whatever, but...
Tam, I think you're, I agree with you. I found, I personally found about, I think it was about seven questions that were objectionable. But to me, that's not the issue. I think we've already seen from the county survey that, from the schools responding, the kids in Montgomery County are no different than the rest of the state. All these numbers are plus or minus one percent. That our kids, we agree, that our kids are kids are kids. And the county identified, there's five or six sheets, everybody can see, that these are the issues. There's suicide, there's alcohol, there's drugs, there's things like that, that we've addressed those for a long, long time. So it's not the survey. To me, it is, what are we, what has the school district been doing? And we've addressed these issues, I believe we have.
I didn't want to insinuate that the kids wouldn't be dishonest with the survey. I just don't think they would take it seriously. That's what I meant. So I want to make, that's what I'll make perfectly clear.
One other, would we get just data based on the North Penn students? I mean, we'd get a graphic representation that is just North Penn?
We would. The superintendent would be given a copy of the North Penn School District aggregated data, correct?
Okay. Thank you.
Depending on the results that we actually get back from this, is there any result that you saw that would actually drive a different way our programs would run? Or do you think that we would actually more than likely double down on the programs that we already have in place?
Well, I think we use a number of different ways to determine our program. We have the state standards and what should be in a health curriculum. We have an Act 211 Committee that puts together programs that we think are important to our children, and it would make a difference in the lives of those children. We have a guidance program that we've spent a lot of time on developing, and I think we have very competent professionals administering that program, and being a part of the development of the curriculum for the guidance program. We have the Student Assistance Program, we have the mainstay program. So I have to honestly say, I cannot anticipate that we're going to get survey results that are going to be dramatically different, as was stated earlier here, than state results or the county results. I don't think we're going to have that, you know, V8 moment where, aha, you know, I have a new revelation here, that, you know, the magnitude of the problem is different than we think it is. I think the results are pretty consistent, and I think the issues are consistently the same, in that we need to have a response to this issue. So there's no doubt that these are important issues, but we're working hard to address those. So I would be hard-pressed to say that I would expect that the results would say, well, we never really spent very much time on X, and now these results indicate we really should be spending much more time on X. I think we are spending our time and resources appropriately, but I'm very willing to sit with the county folks and let them look at what we're doing, and suggest to us areas where they might think there's something else we could be doing, because, you know, maybe there is. But I'm not anticipating that.
Is it correct to understand that they're willing to do that regardless of whether we take this at this point?
They have agreed to that.
So at this point, this is, taking this has no immediate benefit to us?
Correct. What they have said is, if they would, if we would do this, it would free up forty or fifty thousand dollars that would be available to North Penn. But in terms of their willing to work with us, they agreed at the last meeting, you know, they'll be glad to come and sit, they'd be honored to do that.
And then I think I got, I must have gotten a little confused. I was understanding, we would administer this, if we administered this, every other year, sixth, eighth, tenth, and twelfth?
Yeah, it's administered in odd-numbered years across the state.
Okay.
So this is an odd-numbered year, and grades six, eight, ten, and twelve are grades when the school districts have participated in this. You can, as a school district, say you absolutely refuse to give it to a certain grade level and select certain grades, or you can say you don't want to do it. You don't have to do it. Out of all 500 districts, I read online that when it was done in 2013, I think I recall 362 school districts participated, and then, whatever the math is, you know, 140-ish didn't participate.
So, I mean, if I kind of think about that long enough, though, I would imply that about half of our students would never end up seeing this, and then the other half would get, would see this every other year.
That's correct. Because it's an odd years, and then the next year, they'll be again in an even grade. Correct?
Okay.
Just one last comment. Frank was at the meeting with me last week, the Safe Schools Committee that meets at the high school, the ACT Committee. And we did also kick this around, talk about it with that group of people, very group of people. And, you know, the consensus kind of was that it certainly couldn't hurt, especially at the high school level. So they didn't see that it would be a problem. You know, I just, I just think it's just a different point of view of looking at something. I think having the statistics, you know, could make us look at something differently, or it could, you know, the extra funds you would get, we have a lot, we have a large school district, we have a lot, a lot of kids, and so...
If we don't pool...
I'm just saying, it's an opportunity. That's, I'm looking at it very differently, that's all.
If we don't actually end up asking all of the students, and we don't end up taking a pool of all of the students, then we're really...
a pool of all of the students, then we're really leaning towards believing in statistics, right? I mean, at some point, if we only look at half of the student body, we are agreeing that we believe in statistics, and yet we don't believe in the statistics that are all represented around here from all the other units that did this. Okay.
But I don't think that we know what the other school's statistics are, do we?
I think that's what we're holding right here, right?
Right, right.
Right? But we're saying that this isn't trustworthy because we haven't been included in it, but we don't have to include all of our students because only including half of our students is sufficient?
Well, we didn't say that.
Okay, all right. I'm just trying...
There were no other, there were no elementary teachers there last week, or there were no middle school teachers. It was only high school people. So that's why, because the others weren't there to speak. Thank you.
Yeah, let me, let me just chime in. I recall, and you dispute me if I'm wrong, from the ACT 211 Committee, there were two people that were very vocal that we should, the school board should vote to do this. But my understanding, the two people who were vocal about it had not even looked at the survey. I then asked Pete, Assistant Superintendent, to distribute to three people. Three of the people responded, one was totally for it, and two had reservations. They said they would still want to do it, but they had some concerns about it. And I don't have that in front of me. But every, it wasn't, you know, 10 people, 11 people there saying, yes, I'll do it. It was two people really vocal, but they hadn't even looked at the survey. But that, to me, is not the important issue. The important issue is the results. The county has had these results for, they talk about, you know, antisocial behavior, drugs, alcohol, you know, those type things. The issues have already been identified, and the school district has been working on these many, for many, many years. There are the issues that are, is the, what is the ACT 211 Committee doing? What are these other programs that we saw here? What are they doing? What are the teachers doing? There are the issues, the bullying program. To me, we've addressed these way before the county ever came to us, to my knowledge.
Any other comments to this issue?
Yeah, I just, I just want to say, I, I'm just reading through the questions, and I just don't think they're appropriate for sixth graders. You know, let me see if I can find one to read.
If you carry a handgun without your parents' permission, would you be caught by them?
Yeah, or, you know, do you think it's harmful if someone drinks five drinks or more a day? Like, is a sixth grader...
How wrong do your parents feel if it would be to pick a fight, steal graffiti, drink wine, beer, or other hard liquor, smoke cigarettes, smoke marijuana? You really want to get into the parents' opinions, the parents, kids representing their family?
Right. Like, I, I mean, I just have a problem with a sixth grader being confronted with that question. And that's just a series. That's just a couple of a series of questions. There are, I mean, we could talk about eighth and all, but sixth grade? You know? When was the last time you bet and lost money? I mean...
Joe, if you look at the survey results for the county, more than one percent of those sixth graders have been arrested already.
How easy would it be?
You really believe that?
Yeah.
In the past 30 days, by the way.
And, and some of these questions are like...
You really believe that?
Like, I don't think that sixth graders thought about some of these things.
You might want to take, talk to some of the local DJs about that and see what, see if your statistics are accurate.
How many times have you been drunk at school? Sold illegal drugs? I mean, sixth graders have to see this?
Any other comments to this issue?
Well, the other, just one more. I don't think participating in this survey, and I'm just piggybacking on what Corey said, Mr. Brown said, is, would add any statistical significance to the survey. Based on my understanding statistics, the sample size for the county is, is big enough to sort of like extrapolate the information to our school district. So, and along with the other steps that Dr. Dietrich is taking, getting the group together and talk about it, and reconciling some programs with other school districts to what we have in place in case we, I think that covers everything. I just don't see any benefit for us to subject our sixth graders to this survey. And I think students are being test weary or test, or experiencing some test fatigue. I mean, right, we call it a survey, they're gonna see this as a test, another test, another standardized test that they're taking. And I just don't think it's necessary. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I think one of the, and my problem is, obviously, I think the survey's very intrusive to me as a parent and my child. But I'd like to take it a little further than that, and I think I have a lot more faith on our staff that they're doing a great job. And I think Frank O'Donnell's right when he says that, because our guidance counselors do a good job. They catch this kind of stuff. This is what they're there for, and this is what they have to deal with every day. I am very agreeable for Dr. Dietrich and his team to go meet with the county should somebody else be doing something that we're not. And we can bring that to North Penn. But beyond that, we haven't participated in the past, and it hasn't shown any detriment to us. No one's come forward here and said, we're not doing something. Okay? And without that evidence, people who want to put this survey into place, frankly, I just don't think that they're in our best interest. That's fine. You have a right to disagree. Any other comments before we move on?
Obviously, Mr. Shapinski, we believe in this district and everyone in it and what they're doing. This has nothing to do with that. It's bigger than that. Thank you.
Well, not the way it sounds. All right, let's move on with the next item on our agenda.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is one that came out of the Support Services Committee, yes. This is the Shared Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement with the Borough of Lansdale. The Support Services Committee has discussed this on a number of occasions. So, Mr. Schneider, if there's some things you'd like to speak to regarding this, there is a copy that's at your table, and there's some in the back for those who are in the audience this evening. So Tom, you want to take it from here?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Dietrich. In the spring, Lansdale Borough reached out to the school district to start discussions about the possibility of North Penn's district maintenance and custodial staff assisting in the maintenance of their municipal complex, their new municipal complex. Lansdale Borough is a public, essentially a public works. You know, they have people that do the high voltage electric, the public works. But they realized that they would have to hire services or hire people to do the maintenance of their municipal facility, their brand-new facility. This evening also, Brian Shapiro is in the audience. He's the Director of Finance for the Borough. If the board has any questions to address to Lansdale. So we, through the spring and early summer, had a couple meetings to discuss the framework and how this intergovernmental agreement could work, and came up with this simple agreement that if, in fact, the Borough were, the Borough needs assistance in their municipal facility, their new facility, on preventative maintenance, maintenance, or any work, that they could contact the school district through our work order system, and we would dispatch a district maintenance individual on an hourly basis and plus mileage to remedy their problem or situation. We also could support their existing staff. They have a facilities person in the building right now. We could support that staff member with custodial support if necessary, if they have a larger function and, you know, one individual can't maintain the building. So we had worked together, we, I worked with Mr. Schrocky to put together the hourly rates based upon all of our insurances and retirements and all the other costs of doing business, and came up with this hourly rate structure for the year of 2015, 16. This would be a negotiated contract on a yearly basis, realizing that our costs escalate occasionally with real retirement costs increasing and healthcare costs. So we would renegotiate this on a yearly basis and modify the framework if necessary.
Could you do me a favor, just Steve's not here, to ask, can you get her from him, the overhead model to develop, the overhead rates? Okay, no, but I mean, what goes in there to make sure, you know, you got FICA, you got our PISers, you got vacations, holiday, you got workers' comp, you got all these costs that are, that are in there? I'd like just to see that model, to see how that, how it came up with these, with these rates. That's all. Thanks.
You would probably have to get that information to everybody. But at the same time, I mean, is your expectation that we're gonna vote on this next month or next week?
Yes, if that's possible.
Will we get that kind of information in time?
I can talk to Mr. Schrocky tomorrow.
Can I ask you a question, since you've had interaction with the Borough people? What's the driving force behind it? They can't afford to hire trades? They can't afford to have custodial support staff?
Well, it's not that they can't...
I mean, we've already had these kinds of operations with the parochial schools came to us for meals, development, because they can't afford kitchen equipment. Like, we have these accessories, and we have these huge abilities that other districts and other people don't have. So is that the same game here, or they just don't want to pay for these services privatized?
Well, what the Borough expressed to us, and maybe Brian, maybe you can assist in this, but what they expressed to us was that we're all the same tax base, same tax dollars, and if we have the services here and we have the experience here, it would be a duplication of services if they were to hire that, that individual. So we have the experience, our people, you know, we have the, a larger workforce than what they could hire. They could hire an individual, whereas we have specialized technicians, more so than just an all-around general maintenance individual. So if they have an HVAC problem, we can send our HVAC tech who is experienced with chillers and boilers and such, more so than hiring that in-house person.
Yeah, but even with our PISers cost climbing to 30 cents on the dollar, they can't do better going private?
No, private's much higher than these rates, absolutely much higher. Even when we hire in specialists, if we have, if we can't handle the work, you're looking at an elevator service rep at 175 dollars an hour, and, you know, HVAC tech's at 150 dollars an hour. So, you know, it's...
So we provide all the services and raise the taxes to pay for it, and they pay us back some of the money? And they don't have to raise taxes to pay for those services? You know how that sounds to me? I'm not asking you to explain it, I'm just asking you, you know how that sounds? Sounds like we, they want us to do all the heavy lifting, and they get all the benefit. Am I wrong seeing it that way? What do you think?
I think, I do think that there's probably some struggles in that in the sense that these people are already people that we have on staff that are already full-time.
Yeah, and our guys are nonstop busy. We have backlogs, months to fix things, because we don't have enough people. Say that again? I'm sorry.
...says, hey, can we hire your guys as well?
Well, no, I do, I honestly get the idea that we have tradesmen on staff that could help in these situations when they need help. Because, but honestly, a district our size, our guys are, I mean, we have backlogs on just fixing things.
Yeah, but it's not just a one-way street as well. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Schneider, but there were conversations about getting in on buying agreements for, say, rock salt and other types of commodities like that, because they buy so much more in volume, we'd be able to piggyback on their contracts and get reduction in rates on some of those things, types of things. So it's, I think it's a great idea. We're trying to build, you know, a good working relationship to help reduce operating expenses on two municipalities. So, yeah, and maybe we do have some backlog, maybe we need to look at that and see why we have backlog and maybe address that as a separate issue. But I think this is a good agreement.
Tom, let me get a quick, they would be hiring our guys for a significant number of hours. Does that mean our guys right now are just moping around?
No, no.
So where's the extra time come from?
It's, it's really not a significant, I don't expect it to be a significant amount of time. We have a new building, they have a new building over there, the first years aren't under warranty. I don't foresee it to be a significant amount of time. I see it as a cooperative agreement with a municipality where we can join forces, they can help us out if we, if we need help in public works. You know, we needed inlets installed in the roadway at York Avenue, and they got it done this summer. You know, there's some cooperative ventures back and forth where we're helping out each other, and I just see it as a benefit for both.
I guess during, if the board passes this, I would just like to see something come before support services or finance, simply not the money, but how many hours, you know, this custodian, this ground, this equipment, you know? We build, again, not the dollars, but how many hours, just for, just for a little while?
Well, we don't know how many hours at this point, because...
No, I mean, if the board approves this and we move forward for the next three, four, five months...
Oh, sure. Updates.
Just to see, how much time are we spending over there?
Understand something. My understanding is, reading this agreement, if we don't like the way it's going, we could terminate it for 60 days, correct?
Correct.
So, I mean, you know, either side can do that. So, I mean, it's, you know, I know the gentleman over there, Mr. Ziegler's a great guy. I think he has good character. I think he's doing good things for Lansdale, and I know the gentleman, and he, I don't know, I just really feel that this could work. And to answer the question regarding other municipalities, I think we could say no. I mean, we just can't, you know, do anymore. But, I mean, if we can't, if you feel that we cannot do this, that's one thing. I don't have a problem with that. But it, but again, you still have it out here. If you feel after 60 days, it's just not working out, then we can say no to it. I just look at it as a, an opportunity to try to help out a municipality, a neighbor municipality, and as long as we're not losing money on it, you know, it may be a good thing. And if it isn't, then we could just say, okay, we're not gonna keep...
The rates, they'll call them out.
No, I'm just saying, you know, if we don't...
I hear you. I think that's a pretty decent idea, but...
That's my thing.
No priority clause in here? Who comes first?
Yeah, well, that's what I...
One thing is, make sure the rates cover our costs and that, you know, we're, we're first. You know, and then, and unfortunately, that just may, you know, require that they get that HVAC person on private side for a particular issue, because our individual's not available. So...
And this is just one facility, correct?
The other thing is, you gotta look at...
It's just a new building, right?
It's just one facility. Right. But you gotta look at one, one D, too. I don't know what you're trying to say in paragraph D there. So it's, you gotta do something with that, because it doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
I mean, terminate 60 days after the annual...
No, no. Absent of the negotiating meeting, negotiation meeting, absent of the nego...
Well, C says, the intergovernmental cooperation agreement, the services provided and rates charged shall be negotiated annually to determine if services to remain in place, modified, terminated by either party. Absent of, it should say, absent of that negotiation meeting. So if we, if there is no meeting to negotiate...
We should have a meeting every year.
Yes.
Because these rates, our PISers go up every year, so you're gonna have, there's never gonna be an absent of the negotiation meeting, whatever.
Correct.
Okay? So you could, you could delete that, I think. I mean, I think you gotta sit down every year and redo these, these things if it's gonna be viable for us. Because our, you know, our stuff changes every year.
Yes.
Evaluate this and change some things?
Yeah, I mean, I just tweak it, but I'm, I'm comfortable with it, so long as, so long, I mean, I would hate to hear, though, that if we do have a backlog of maintenance and we're not getting to that because we're helping Lansdale, I think there's an issue with that. So we should avoid that, too.
I don't think, I don't know, I just don't think it's gonna, I think it's gonna, I think it'll work.
I think it will. I think it will.
I think it can work. And like I said, it's not like we're signing a five-year contract here, or it's 60 days. I mean, that's basically what you're looking at. So...
Any other comments to this?
I think that these types of contracts between us and the other local municipalities are very healthy in the sense of really showing cooperation and sharing and working together. But like you said, it's, obviously, we have to make sure we mow our own yard first. I mean, we gotta take care of our own stuff, and I don't think anybody has any question about that.
Just wanted to know if there was precedent in other school districts for this, and
Just wanted to know if there was precedent in other school districts for this and have they been successful?
I'm not aware of any other school districts.
Pretty much us. Yeah, we're, because we're one of the larger school districts in the entire region, we're the ones that have the economy of scale. We're the guys with the, with the people, the staff, the equipment that can do things. We ran into this with the parochial schools when they came to us and said, look, we can't afford to keep our own cafeterias open the way you do. You have the equipment, we can't upgrade our equipment, we can't spend that kind of money. So they came to us and they wanted us to cooperate and work with them to provide food, services, and other things like that, and it's, it worked out quite well for us in the long run. We had bigger buying power, we had other things happen that worked positively. I'm hoping that's what happens here.
Yes.
But I just want to make sure that we have that priority clause in here. But I do believe there's always that issue that somebody will come along next and say the same thing.
Well, that's, that's the thing, like I was saying, I really believe that we can say no, we just can't extend ourselves anymore. But...
Okay.
Just one final comment.
Public comment?
Before I take public comment?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I did my own quick analysis of this, but I was missing a few things last night. I came up to a minimum with no profit of $33 an hour. That's why if this moves forward, I'd like to see something, see what Steve's worksheet is and then if there's some discussions, some quick emails going or something new presented next week. $23 an hour, it just seems 25, too low.
That's why we have work sessions, right?
For what, we pay?
That's why we have work sessions.
We pay top benefits, so you take, you take the base pay and what is it, what's the total person's benefits? So you get your salary, your vacation, your holiday, your sick time, you add all that up and divide that by the total hours.
Good point.
Here's the rate without a, without a profit. So I'd like to see what he...
Okay. That's why we have work sessions.
Just too low.
Okay.
All right, I'm going to take the public comment now. So anybody wishing to speak to the board, please feel free to state your name and address that board, sign the audience of citizens logbook and share your comments.
Two wonderful issues tonight to speak to. I'm trying to make this very brief tonight. My name is William Patchell, I live at 404 Bonnie Lane, Lansdale, Pennsylvania, and just like to make a short comment because there were a lot of topics touched. First thing, we have an election coming up and I think maybe some of the people that are sitting here tonight maybe not be on board, maybe not be on board because they won't get reelected. So I think to comment about anything or discussion about anything, it's too close to this election and I would like to see people that are standing under the scrutiny of public election, standing under the scrutiny of public election, and you know what that means? That means that the public will get to pick you, you will not be appointed. People who get elected, not appointed, have the true authority to spend the taxpayers' money. No one else has the ability or the, or the right to spend my money. I don't go with five or six people appointing somebody to spend my money. Now, first thing, we have some major topics coming up and I think the public should be well aware. $60 to $90 million of a, of a school project coming on. I think they should be well aware of this. I don't think we can afford to do that. I think that we need to find other ways to do this. I don't want to pay the bond issue on 60 million if you do it on the cheap. Maybe to go as high as 90 million if you really like the guy with the Princeton hard hat. It's all, it's all wrong. The senior citizens cannot keep paying more and more and more money. All you people do really well. I bet you all have great medical, I bet you all make over $100,000 a year. I don't know. I don't know. You all drive pretty nice cars? You ought to take a drive through Lansdale. I bet there's a lot of people that are really challenged. You talked about, oh, what about the families? How many families are living in this custodial situation? That's why they're drinking and doing drugs because there's one single mom, she's got two kids, she hardly gets home, and I don't know what little Billy, I think he's down in the basement, you know, drinking Budweiser, and that's the real problem that you got. So you think you're a wealthy district? You are not a wealthy district. You have a bubble of a few wealthy people, but you have a vast majority of people that are just struggling along like the vast majority of the families in the United States, just making it paycheck to paycheck. You know how many families have less than $1,000 for emergencies? Millions of them, they don't even have a retirement. They have nothing. And you know what? Maybe they live in a rental house. Oh, yeah, my rent went up. Why? Oh, yeah, the taxes went up because the teacher's got a new contract. Remember what's coming up next? I'll make this brief. We have a teacher's contract. How much is enough? I think our staff, both in building services and the teachers, are paid handsomely. They're above the state, the state average, I think, and all, in my belief in a free-market capitalistic system, governments do not take the lead on wages. Private industry will take the lead on wages and the government will, will follow behind. The problem is when you have a governmental agency procuring stuff, yeah, you've got CVN 78 and 79, $30 billion for two aircraft carriers. It makes me sick. I called up Toomey's office, are you having a problem down there? You need to reexamine all your budgets and I think that only people that are qualified to talk about spending my money, you've encumbered my house, I never owned my house, you guys own my house, I get to rent it for a very, very low price. I want people that get elected, not appointed, voting. And if, and if you're gone, I'm willing to talk with the people that stood the scrutiny of the public election process. And it's a sad day when 2,900 voters get to put the top vote getter in. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Bill, as somebody who was raised by a single mom, I really do take offense to that comment that she didn't pay attention to me. Step to the podium and state your name and then feel free to ask us questions. Go ahead.
Good evening. Mr. Shapinski and fellow board members. My name is Carol Poet. I'm the president of the Gwinnett Club Association, a development of condominiums of 450 homes, 134 acres, which contributes $700,000 in school tax money every year to the school board. We've had problems over the recent past that has been, I've addressed with Mr. Peron in regard to the water runoff into our development, which has cost us in the past few years well over, this is my treasurer.
We're paying 300, almost 300,000 for the current drainage project and we are also paid $170,000 in prior, oh, sorry, we've paid, we paid over $170,000 so far in drainage issues by prior boards that were like Band-Aids on the issue, they didn't really address it. The current board has taken the time to contact engineering and other engineers and we're revamping the roads and putting in the appropriate drainage problem, drainage solutions to address this problem and just on two roads alone, we're spending almost $300,000. That's all privately funded from homeowner condominium fees. We get no funds from the township or grants.
The question before us tonight is that we are very concerned, we had spoken, I had spoken directly with Mr. Peron and also took along our property manager as well in regard to our problem and how it's a reflection of what's going on uphill from us. We're at the bottom of the hill. The school's up here, we're down here and...
Wait a minute, the water runoff's not coming from our property, it's coming from above us.
Sir, may I say that the township, no matter where the water problem is coming from, it's coming through your property or from your property into our property.
It's coming right across to our property too. That's why we're talking about giving up land to try to solve the problem for everybody.
I understand your position. What my position is, I represent all those people that are paying all those taxes and we're spending all our condo fees on drainage repairs in our community being caused by something outside of what we can remedy. And we really, really encourage this board and the township to remedy that situation, whether it's going to be on the school property or some other manner, but not to put it off any longer because it's just very, very, it makes the whole conditions unsafe.
It's a major hardship, it's a major hardship for the people in our community.
And we recognize that too because when they first came to us and said, we need to try to find a solution to this problem, you're the guys, you're the only people that have land that can solve our problem.
What do you mean, we only have land that can solve our problem?
It's us.
Oh, okay, sorry.
And we were, we were told that they had some solutions and we've been working with them to come up with a decent solution. I totally agree with you. We've gone up there in rainy storms and we've seen the rain pour off of the Pico property and it's horrible. And you can imagine what happens to us in the winter time when it freezes and our kids are walking across that ice skating rink.
Well, we have it on our sidewalk as well.
Oh, yeah, you have it far worse than us because you are farther downhill.
We're in sympathy with you, we're on the same side.
Just so you know, ma'am, we've been working for this, with this for over a year. We've been out there multiple times working with the engineer and even our last meeting some questions came up, some of the board members who had questions went out there with the engineer again and my understanding is their questions were answered.
Oh, good, okay.
But, you know, we just, you've got to understand something, we want to make sure that we move forward with this, that it's the right solution and that everybody's on board with it.
Absolutely.
And, you know, we want to be a good neighbor, but understand, we have a problem too that we had nothing to do with. I mean, we, we did not cause this problem. This problem's been going on for 30-plus, plus years.
But is that the right argument to have?
Absolutely. We had nothing to do with this problem. I can assure you that, you can talk to Mr. Peron. This is nothing to do with North, it's one thing to come to North Penn and say, okay, you guys have built this building and created this problem. That's not what happened here. What happened here was certain developments up from us have been put in with poor engineering 30, 40 years ago. A lot of townships go through this. And we're trying to be a good neighbor and work with the township to try to solve both the problem that's happening to us as well as the problem that's happening to your folks and people downriver.
Well, I understand there's a $600,000 question in your budget about this is what it will cost to make the basis.
No, it's not going to cost us anything.
Oh, and how is that?
Because we're not...
The township's from us, they've reached out to try to get grants.
But they came to us and first...
All we have to do is sacrifice all the land to do.
I just want you to know, we've been very open to try to help you guys, but I want to make it perfectly clear to you and to whoever's watching, we did not create this problem. We are trying to go out of our way to trying to solve the problem and help you folks. I'm being totally honest with you.
Sir, I...
You know, and so we're bending, I'm selling, we're trying, and I think everybody's on board now and I think we'll move ahead. But we want to, we don't want to rush this thing. We want to make sure that whatever a solution that comes about will, will fix the problem. You know what I'm saying? And my understanding is now we're at a point now where it will and...
Well, we don't want, we didn't come here to make a contentious argument.
Well, no, I'm not arguing with you.
We just came here to present our plea to you and to ask you to either move along with the township and have them do it. Move along with the township and have them take care of it or work with township to resolve the issue, whether it's your problem or the township's problems.
Yeah, but we have been, we have been working with the township.
But you're saying you don't want it on your property?
No, I didn't say that.
Understand the concern. Our school district and our concern is mainly for the protection of our students. Originally, their plan came forward, they had a huge danger problem for us, digging a 38-foot ditch on our property. Kids are going to fall in holes. Obviously, they came back and re-engineered, they came up with better ideas, relocations. We worked with them. That's us.
Yeah.
That, that's because they want us to give up the property, which is a huge sacrifice to us. Understand, they're not making land anymore, we can't acquire it any other way. Our challenge in this way...
Do you know it's a big sacrifice? Do you know it's a big sacrifice?
Yeah, we are solving the problem for everybody and it's, they're going to get grants and we're getting the property.
I don't know who told you...
Do you know what the sacrifices to the 430 homeowners who live across the street?
Yes, you're suffering the same way we are with the water problems.
No, we're suffering decreased property values, we're suffering from structural issues.
Absolutely.
So it's, it's not just...
But you can't go back in time and solve the problem that they made bad decisions 40 years ago and flooded people out.
You just said that you've known about this for 30 years. Why is it...
No, we've known about it, we've had problems and they came to us two years ago and started a discussion on having eight-foot, three eight-foot huge pipes to take the water past you.
This gentleman just stated that they've known about this problem for 30 years.
No, I said that 30, 40 years ago, the problem was created by poor drainings development and through the years, it has gotten worse and worse until the last 10 years or whatever, where they have finally come to a point, well, some, and the township, it's our responsibility. They've come to us in the last, what, two years and said, look, we have a, we have a, you know, just like septic systems. Have you ever gone places up in Upper Frederick or wherever where they have problems with septic systems? You know, 30, 40 years ago, it's the same type of issue.
My question is, if you've known about it for this long and it's impacted this community, your school district, your property for this long, why is it...
We didn't know it was affecting you guys.
Excuse me, I've given you the opportunity to speak. I have a question. You've known that it's, it's been around for a long time, but nobody has done anything, taken any of the necessary steps to address...
Yeah, but that's not our responsibility, ma'am.
But it's impacting your property.
It is. And we've taken step, we've taken steps to try to help our own property. We've gone to Pico and complained. You could stand on the edge of our property and watch Pico's river roll by our property and goes right to your homes.
And we've taken trees down, we've put a retention basin in. We've tried to control the problems of poor engineering for, I talked to our previous facilities director, I asked him, how long has this been going on? He told me it's been going on for 20, 30 years, that we've been trying to deal with this problem. It wasn't until two years ago that they came to us. Was it two years ago?
Two years, just about two years ago now.
And we said to them, we will be more than happy to work with you. But what gets me is, and I'm going to be personally honest with you, you're trying to almost come to us and act like we caused this. We didn't cause this.
Nobody's placing blame, sir.
Man, you said it when you first came here, you said it was our problem and we did it. And I'm being totally honest with you. If I were you, I want you to understand something, we are working with the township right now. We had three people go out, they said they're on board with it now. It should pass, but it's, you should be talking to the township, not us.
We have talked.
And, yeah, I'm just saying, the first time we walked through here, I'm not going to say who, but one of your officials, I asked the question, why wasn't this addressed before those apartments were built over there, whatever they are?
1969.
Well, he's talking about stuff farther down.
We walked, we walked all the streets back there. We were shown all the flooding issues and I said, what about the land development when they went through? It wasn't done right. We should have done a better job.
Well, can you tell me, we don't have any knowledge of somebody doing that.
Well, I'm telling you, can I just think about it? Where's the land development when that was going through?
That's what I'm trying to tell you.
So you just say it's our problem.
Hold on, why don't you guys, Mr. Solomon has something to say.
We're going to help you fix it.
Frank, get it, Mr. Solomon. Let Mr. Solomon speak first, he wants to say something.
I can't stand an argument, I'm not in.
There you go.
Welcome aboard. Come on in. All right. I don't think it, I think it's a moot issue.
It is.
Like, it doesn't really matter whose fault it is.
Ladies, sometimes it's, it makes more sense to simply sit down, you've made your point. I think the more you say, you're only going to hurt your cause, candidly. We've already, we've already looked at it, we've already made, you know, thank you for your time, but to now pick a fight and like argue, and I know you're not trying to, but you're not helping your cause.
We've already looked at it, we already...
We're, we're fine. I mean, we're not, this isn't an action meeting, but... We're going to give up the land, we're going to work with them and we're going